I'm sure at nine o'clock with a call public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine o'clock AM Wednesday, July the sixteenth, twenty fourteen, come to order please. If somebody moves, we accept the agenda as published.
Move.
Have a motion District Three, Second District One. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, lift your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Purpose of this meeting here is have a public hearing for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen millage rate. I don't know exactly who's gonna say what, but a prerequisite for this, I'm gonna read this and that way I'll get it correct. Anytime you have a, discuss the millage for the coming year, this year, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, whenever the county proposes to adopt a millage rate which does not exceed the rollback rate, then only one public hearing is required. Number two, in those instances where the county proposes to establish a general maintenance and obligation millage rate which would require increase beyond the rollback rate, the county must conduct at least three public hearings, at least one of those public hearings must be held between the hours of six PM and seven PM. So, we having one this morning at nine o'clock and this afternoon, we having one at six o'clock. All ads had to be run in the paper. So, needless to say, if the board was gonna accept the rollback, and I'm just gonna state this too, because this is fact, the millage rate last year was fourteen point four nine seven. Based on the information and data that we got from the Tax Commissioner and the Tax Assessors Office, the rollback this year, and what this rollback means to me, was the millage without a, only one public hearing to approve it would be twelve point nine 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 five, the millage, that's with the rollback. So, if the board was gonna accept that, they would have to have one public hearing and then they would adopt this at that meeting. But, that would be, in order to, to keep it at fourteen point four nine seven by law, whether we like it or not by law, we have to advertise that it's gonna be an increase if we keep it at fourteen point four nine seven. So, that would be about eleven point five six percent increase in the difference, and money wise, that would generate, I'm gonna say roughly seven point one, seven point two million over what we collected in this previous year. So, now, having said that, I don't really know who's prepared to make a presentation at this point here. So, if nobody's prepared, that's pretty well in a nutshell and the paper said it. So, at that point, unless the Commissioner has any comments at this time, I'm gonna open the floor up for public comment. Okay, having done, at this time here, I would like to recognize the podium and open it up for anybody that would like to make public comments for or against the proposed budget. So, if you would, I ask that you, if you can, limit your time to five minutes, and also state your name and address for the records. Now, we not gonna, we don't have many here, so I don't want somebody to go on and on and on, but if you're not wrapped up in five minutes, I'm not gonna put the clock, but I will keep up with it. So, having said that, I will open the floor up. Anybody to make any comments?
I'm Elton Alexander, nine twenty Maple Leaf Drive, McDonough, Georgia, and I'm here because we care Henry County and raise the bar. In this debate is very interesting, because there's mitigating circumstances. Those mitigating circumstances are, if we're at a static level and services were adequate at this point, then we could take that on face value, what you just said, Mr. Chairman. But, we are lacking services in this community. Our service level is not adequate, and we have challenged this board to raise the bar. Our position is that we wanna rollback, we don't wanna pay as much, no more taxes than we have to pay, but our service level needs to be increased. Currently, our turnover rate among employees is over twelve percent. World-class requires world-class people. We can't do that again, as I said last night, on the cheap, our penny pension. Now, again, there's a middle ground here. Now, if we went for the full rollback, that's gonna eliminate any possibilities for raising the service level in the county. Now, the rollback, we're asking for a rollback, maybe about one point, whereas we can also increase the service level to the community, because we cannot be at a static level and have the service requirements that we had last, had last year and the year before that. We spoke very passionately and heard from many constituents about the conditions of our corridors such as Jonesboro Road allowed to be overgrown. Now, we need to add personnel for that, and we need to add additional personnel for that, because those things need to be taken care of. We do offer an additional vision on how to close some of these budgetary gaps. Last night in my speech, I didn't get a, get a chance, we have so many, we have code enforcement in this county that is surely lacking. Code enforcement should be a profit center for this county that can help us raise the bar. We need to bring on some more code enforcement officers. The city of Stockbridge just did the same thing. We have a lot of absentee landlords, we have businesses who are not withholding their end to raise the bar in the community. We have millions of dollars laying on the table right there to close some of these budgetary gaps. There's other pockets that we can look into to help close some of these gaps. Now, when I look at it again, our main goal with raise the bar is to say, you know what, if everything was static, if everything being equal and our service level was adequate, right now, it is not adequate. So, we need additional funding. We need additional funding for world-class, world-class people, world-class equipment. I was told that our fire engines themselves average eleven years and over a hundred thousand That's not world-class. We got eleven-year-old trucks, a hundred thousand miles plus, and we're looking at this coming to us and seeing that we are static. We need investment in this county, and this county is starved for investment. I'm not asking, I'm not asking to pay any more than I have to pay, but if it comes between rolling back too far and being not, not being able to raise the level of service to world-class, mitigate that, gentlemen, and let's revisit this in the future.
I think you said the fire trucks were eleven years old? I mean, from my understanding, I know we can get some correction from staff, I think they're, aren't they closer to eighteen years?
Eighteen.
So, I mean, that's the thing, is that it just, it kind of adds to what you're even saying, is that the actual age is averaged at eighteen instead of the ten years that's typical, the replacement shelf life of all these fire engines, and the average cost, I think, is over six hundred thousand on each one of those.
The average age of the vehicle in the county is twelve point seven three years, a hundred thousand miles. The life expectancy on a fire truck is somewhere between twelve and fifteen years, and our average age is somewhere around eighteen years. So, and they are about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars new, and about two hundred thousand dollars to equip them, so it's about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment for every new fire truck.
Thank you so much, Mr. [inaudible]. Anybody else like to be heard?
My name is Mercedes Barker, two seven five Hillview Road, Hampton, Georgia. I was here a month ago with the library and also about this same issue. I'm gonna come with a little bit more facts. This is my own, right here is my property taxes since nineteen ninety-two, when we bought the property we live in at two seven five Hillview Road. We've had a home there since nineteen ninety. This morning, I did a little research online. I'm against the millage rate, I'm against being taxed overly already, okay? Since last year, if the budget was good enough last year, and how much we ran this county on last year, then why are we needing more money? Okay? From last year to this year, I looked online, I looked at one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twelve houses on Hillview Road from Ash, from Willow Ridge to Dillon. There's twelve houses, not counting anything that's in the subdivisions. The average rate of increase on property value was fifty-four thousand dollars. We're not talking about fifty dollars. We're not talking about ten percent in unincorporated county. We're talking about an increase in the property value, and then on top of that, your fifty, piddly fifty dollars. If it was fifty dollars, I'd suck it up, because I can suck up fifty dollars. I can't suck up five to six hundred dollars. Which one of you would like to pay it for me? My husband works in Hampton for a business that's owned by a Hampton resident, hasn't had a pay increase in twelve years. Groceries have doubled, my Georgia power bill has about a thirded up, my water bill in that time has doubled. Which one of you would like to pay my five to six hundred dollar increase in my property tax bill? If, if the money was enough that we raised last year at the rate we raised last year, then why is it, why did the property values have to increase, and then the millage rate on top of that? I'm not even calling for a rollback to the eleven point, whatever the rollback number was, twelve point nine nine five. I'm calling for it to go further back, because if, if I, if it was enough for last year, then why is it not good enough for this year? I understand what this gentleman's talking about, about, you know, people not getting paid, but you know what? The economy is not good anywhere, and for us to go giving out millions of dollars in this county, or I think it was a million dollars or so in monies for raises, is not acceptable. For right now, that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Anybody else like to be heard? Mr. Byrd, the Honorable Henry Byrd, Councilman, City of Hampton.
Yeah, Henry Byrd, one oh five Lake Hampton Drive, City of Hampton. I guess there's some misunderstandings as far as what exactly that this is all about. I know I didn't understand it and still don't, and I wish that somebody on the board would actually explain it a little bit clearer as to what it is that you're trying to do right now. If you could do that, I think that would clear a lot of things up for a lot of the people, so, and that's...
Let me share what I know. Last year, the, because of the economy, the budget was designed to be the same as it was the previous year in twelve, because of the economy. Okay, the economy did not grow much, so the previous average loan tax in twelve was fourteen point five oh. Based on the rollback last year, the budget was designed, and we took three million dollars out of fund balance to pay the one point eight percent raise for the employees, and also the one point nine million we took to pay the county's portion of the, we paid all of the portion of the sixteen percent increase in major medical for the fifteen, or thirteen hundred employees. We have fifteen, but two hundred doesn't participate in the program. Now, having said that, based on the rollback last year, it was so minute that the rollback, we, what it amounts to, fourteen point four nine seven last year would generate the same amount of money, based on the assessment that fourteen point five zero did in twelve. Okay? Even though it's point oh oh three rollback, the deal was, if we'd have kept it at fourteen point five, we'd have to go through the same three hearings to keep it at fourteen point five oh. So, the board at that time said, you know, we're not gonna, we're gonna do the rollbacks, we had one public meeting, and then we set the millage after that. Now, the, the significant thing is, based on the figures, whether we like it or not, is the law. If you, based on the assessment, if the assessment goes up, and for an example, this coming year, based on the assessments from the Tax Assessors Office, the level, correction, twelve point nine nine five mills will generate the same amount of money as fourteen point four nine seven did last year. Okay? What that really means is, in real numbers, is somewhere around sixty-five million dollars. Okay? If you leave it at fourteen point four nine seven this year, which would be eleven point five percent increase in property tax, that means you're gonna generate another seven point one to seven point five million. It would be, eleven point five six would generate that seven point one. Now, the budget, the board approved the budget, May the twenty-second, a balanced budget. Okay? In order to balance the budget, we had thirty-five million dollars in fund balance. Okay? The board took, to balance the budget, we took six million dollars out, and reason being, we gave all employees two percent this coming year, and we gave the, in the budget is two percent for all the first responders, fire EMS, and police, insurance department. So, that way, it took six million dollars to do this. So, to answer your question, the budget as it is now is balanced. So, if, if the board decides to increase the taxes, then they would have to go back and amend the budget and add the seven point one million and designate it for something. Now, if somebody's got any other comments more than that, they need to share it. So, I yield a floor to District Two.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, to kinda keep it simple, is, because I was driving in this morning, I was listening, Gwinnett County, and it was on the news that they kept their millage exactly the same as last year, but because values had increased, it was an increase in taxes according to the government. I've heard a lot of people concerned, because I think in the media, it's been portrayed that we're actually meeting to raise the millage rate. And that's actually our question we had before the meeting, Mr. Byrd, was you asked, are y'all really raising the millage? And I got two emails, some of them from city council members and others asking, are y'all really meeting to raise the millage? And I said, I have yet to talk to one person on the county commission who's seeking to raise the actual millage rate. As, as the chairman has mentioned, the rate last year was fourteen point four nine seven. I have not heard anybody here that wanted to go above fourteen point four nine seven, but because home values have increased, and I even pulled up, I went on Zillow dot com just to see what's going on in Henry County, because I know I've looked at my home property value, and I looked out there, let me find, pull that app up real quick, and I pulled up Hillview Road, just as an example, because that's what was brought up. I mean, and I think it's interesting, because what's happening, I even had people ask me from Hampton, why is Hampton being impacted so much with the biggest, I think that, somebody asked the question, was there a bigger increase that occurred in Hampton? And what I found in my research when I looked into it, is that, as I've talked about during the community block grant funding discussions, is that Hampton is one of the more financially struggling communities in the county, and that's why I've always tried to fight to get us more resources when we do the community block grants, but we also have two, we're also, have two fire stations that are coming in, we have a senior center that we're working towards, and we're trying to figure out how we make all that work. And when I looked at the Hillview Road, because that was the example just brought, Zillow in the last year, I mean, the values of houses went, this is what they sell for out in the marketplace on Hillview Road, I'm looking at a house that was in nineteen ninety sold for, it says twelve thousand dollars. Last year, it was valued at market value, right around fifty to sixty thousand dollars. This year, it's valued at seventy-four thousand, and it's estimated, because Zillow even does a zest, what they call a zestimate forecast of what they think's happening in the next year, they think it's gonna go up another twelve and a half percent in the coming year. So, this is, and, and I know that, because this same value, this property I'm looking at, in two thousand and four, it paid eleven hundred and ninety-seven dollars in taxes, but then last year paid one hundred and eleven dollars in taxes. And that's all, has nothing to do, it does have to do with our millage, but a lot of it has to do with the market value of your house. Is the value in the area going up? That's to be celebrated, that values are going up. Thank God. I mean, I can tell you, my own personal house, there was a period, if, I think it was before David was the Tax Commissioner, but I would've let you take my house for what it was assessed at. I mean, we all heard that adage, a lot of people pre-two thousand and eight and nine would've said, come take it, you know, you can have it, I will sell it to you for what you've assessed it at. My house is actually, I know for a fact, I could sell my house for thirty percent more than what I'm assessed at right now. And I'm not saying that for the whole tax digest, I'm just saying mine, is I think that we've gone the other way, where we've been very conservative, and that's good for the taxpayers. I want us to be as conservative as possible, but just as we've lost forty percent of our tax digest because values went down, we're now in this celebration mode of things are going back up, and we've all sharpened our pencils and cut things tremendously, and I kind of have a unique experience coming from the school board, as well as now in the county commission, and I think we're just working back. I'm hopeful that we can come to a compromise where we make a, you know, a kind of a promise to the taxpayers, we don't wanna raise the millage, we even wanna slightly give back in the coming years, because I think there's an opportunity over the next four to five years to start giving millage back. But, we also have six years worth of pinned-up demand with the county, with these fire stations, fire trucks. We also have some pay discrepancies within our public safety that we wanna address, I mean, because we, that's why our turnover rate is three times the average of most government organizations right now. Twelve percent, we should be, we should be saddened by that, that's our turnover rate within our county, and a lot of it has to do with us being so pinned up into our demand. So, I know I went on a ways with that, you know, Henry, but I just wanted to make sure I pass that on, because I wanna make sure we're doing everything we can for our citizens that, it's a good thing that our property values are going up, but we also wanna be good stewards to our taxpayers as well.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Yes, sir, are you the floor of District Four?
And one thing I think is important for everybody to know, everybody on this board doesn't get a break on our taxes. When we have a tax increase, it costs us too. We pay the same thing for gas that you do, we pay the same thing for milk and bread that you do. I have a couple of commercial buildings, they're small, but I pay, if this thing goes that direction, I'm paying more tax too. So, I mean, it's a countywide thing, it's not just, it's not just that, but the one thing that I wanted to, I'm not gonna go deep into it, but I do wanna get some more information on it. I was given that our reserve fund was in, would be in the eighteen million dollar range, and Tommy, I think you said it's around thirty-two, so I really wanna get that cleared up before our twenty-third meeting, but, having said that, we've hit our reserve fund every year, and the reserve fund this year, because of the increase in the overall budget, which went from a hundred and twenty-two plus or minus million to a hundred and twenty-eight plus or minus million, all of that increase would be coming out of our reserve fund if we went to the twelve dot nine nine. So, I mean, there's, there's some, there's a lot of issues there, and yeah, I understand that the economy's been bad. A lot of things that are happening now will not hit our budget until the next cycle. A lot of this new construction and other things that are going on, so in the next cycle, it may actually be able to come down even more, and as things get, but at the end of the result is, is that when I was, first came in the office, the millage, one mill was approximately six plus million dollars. In the worst time, one mill was a little over, you know, three and a half to three point five, three point six million dollars. Now, it's about four point one or two. So, I mean, you know, because our digest had lost so much money, you know, from that standpoint, that the millage rate had to go up in order just to keep the basic services, and just, just for informational purposes, I mean, the, the police, the fire, and the court systems, you know, that takes over sixty percent of our budget, and then we've gotta keep our roads up, we've gotta keep our county up, we've gotta take care of all the other things we have to take care of. As a, as a guy that's in business, it takes money to run a business, and, and you know, the county, sure. We hadn't given raises, we, I think we started two cycles back with a, with a two percent, and then another two percent, but we went for five or six years without any raises. We went for several years with furlough days where they had, you know, they had to take time off without pay. There's, it's more to it than just that, oh, the commissioners, you know, they're money hungry and they're trying to go up. No, that's not it, because if we raise that thing, if it goes a different direction, it costs us money too. None of us get a break. I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't wanna break, number one, it wouldn't be the right thing, but at the end of the day, we, we're paying just like you are, you know, and just like at the, at the city council, it takes money to run Hampton. I mean, you know, you got your own, I think, don't you have your own water service and, and your own utilities, and a lot of your own other things? It takes money to do those, you can't do them without money. And you have your own police department, and the city of Hampton gets rollbacks from Henry County for some of the service, I think the police department or something that you do, so. Hopefully, that helps you some, but, you know, I've been told that our reserve fund will go down to around eighteen million dollars. I just wanna make sure we clear that air up and make sure that whichever, I would be extremely happy if it was in the thirty-plus million dollar range that our reserve fund was. If that's the truth, then, yeah, then we probably need to think about, you know, rolling it back as far as we can, but things do increase, so, I appreciate it. I'm just kinda letting you know where I feel about it. I don't wanna do it. I got family that lives here, you know, I live here, all my kids live here, I got cousins and nephews and, you know, family that lives here, and so, any decision I make affects a lot of people, including, you know, my friends and other people, but my church family, it affects them too. I don't really wanna do that, but, you know, as a decision that we have to make, which is one of the tough decisions that we have to do, probably, probably the hardest one that we have to deal with, is trying to, is trying to make a budget work and work within, and coming out of the worst economic times since the depression, because none of us were here during the depression, I don't think, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're, you know, the worst times since then, so, hopefully, you know, as the economy improves and more things come online, then it'll be able to roll it back, or roll it back even more, move it back, but that'll be because the millage rate, I mean, the mill, one mill will be worth five or six million and not three or four million. So, hopefully, that explains some of it, too.
Yeah, I guess, how much is the tax digest as far as what will be taking in from last year to this year, when you, when, when it comes in this year? How much difference is there in that?
We'll hear that in just a few minutes.
Okay, so they're gonna give our...
I don't know the answer to it, but...
But, I think there's a lot of misconception as to what this is all about. I mean, the way it was written up in the paper, I mean, it sound, you know, I mean, it sounded like, well, Hampton's fixing to get a sixteen percent increase, and, you know, it's just the way they had it, and I don't know who put it out there or why it was put in that way, or, but there's a lot of misconceptions on it, I think, from what I'm hearing. So, it sounds like there's not actually gonna be a millage increase in your, as far as taxes, if that's what I'm hearing.
Nobody on this board is, that I know of, and I've talked to everybody on the board that's interested, or even, even mentioned a millage rate increase. We've actually talked more about some rollback, but we don't know how much until we get a handle on some of these other things, so...
But, the budget has been passed as far as with it, the way it is at this point?
The budget has been passed with taking approximately, don't hold me to the exact number, but it's in the six million dollar range out of the reserve fund.
Right.
In other words, the only way it would go is, go in the direction we're going, which would actually put, you know, there again, I'm told that it would put money back into reserve fund. Only one person, and that's, and that's the chair, is here all the time. We're not here all the time. We have to rely on what our staff tells us, our finance department and our other staff tells us, this is where we're going, this is what we've gotta have, and this is what it takes, and, so, you know, that's what we're relying on, is information given.
I think Fred wants to make a comment. Fred, the Finance Director?
I can make a correction, Commissioner Bowman. The present, at the end of last year, June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, we ended the year with thirty-two million plus in fund balance. If this year's budget is balanced, in other words, expenses and revenues come out the same, obviously, we'll still have thirty-two million. Actually, the budget has three million in it, I think. Yeah, we're budgeting to use some of it this year, so that would take some of it, but if we can balance it, then it'll stay at thirty-two. Next year, with the six, over six million dollars, it would take it down to twenty-six. I don't know where the eighteen came from. The only thing that, that possibly could've been thought of is that whatever you take out of fund balance each year is gonna be continued through the years forward, so that when you do your FY sixteen budget, you're still gonna have to fill that hole for six million dollars again, and if you fill it this year with fund balance, you're gonna have to fill it again next year, or raise taxes, or cut expenses, or whatever. So, as it goes down the further years, you will continue to reduce thirty-two to twenty-six to twenty, and so on and so forth. So, that's the only thing I can think of, but eighteen is not a figure we're at, or we would be at, at the end of FY fifteen, next, next June.
I'd gotten that number from a number of pieces of information that we've gotten. I could've, I could've subtracted the wrong number from it, but are you telling me that if we take six million dollars out of the reserve fund this year, we will have thirty-two million dollars in the reserve fund?
No, if we take, if last year's June thirtieth, thirteen, where we were at thirty-two plus million, if FY fourteen, where we just ended this June, if we take nothing out of reserves, we'll still end up with thirty-two. With next year's budget proposing to use six, over six million of it, we'll end up on June thirtieth of fifteen with twenty-six million.
Okay. I yield the floor. Okay. I recognize District Two.
Fred, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. I know, just equating it back to my business, is that there's certain parts of the quarter where I'm flush with money because I just bill clients, but then as I get to the end of the quarter, especially around Christmas time after bonuses and everything else, I probably run the leanest. I run around the December period of time. When we hit our lean periods, because, you know, we send out tax bills, there's probably a huge influx of revenue that comes into the county. But then, as we get to the end of the year, which I guess is similar, is that right there, we're at it today. So, and is that thirty-two million is the leanest period of time?
Uh, no, it's not the leanest. The leanest will be in October.
And what is, what do we, because I think that might be what Reed is getting to, is that's where, if you look down, when you get to your leanest, that's what I consider your reserves are truly at, is when you're, you don't have any money coming in and that's what you've got at the end, for the rainy day fund.
Fund balance is measured in, at the end of the audit period of June thirtieth, every year. And at the end of the audit, as I said, last year, we had thirty-two million plus. In July, obviously, we're not collecting one-twelfth of the total property taxes because they've all been collected and put into that thirty-two million. There's very little dollars still to collect. So, what we're doing is we're eating into the fund balance, that thirty-two million each month, because we're not collecting the biggest part of our revenues, property taxes, because they've already been collected and sitting in a reserve, as you said.
So, what is it in October typically?
In October, it could be down to near zero. Uh, one of the big things that we have in October is we collect over six million dollars, which is part of the budget for insurance premiums from the state. When that check comes in, then we can breathe a sigh of relief. If it's late, then we're, I'm just going based on my knowledge of last year. You know, we're, we're holding our breath to make sure it gets in here on time, and that gets us through October. And then November, like I said, taxes are, start to collect. And I think David, Tax Commissioner, will tell you, we do collect some, some of the property taxes even in October. Some people prepay, so there's some, some monies that are coming in a little bit early because people get their tax bills, and some people just mail the check in early even though it's due in November. So, it's, it's one of those, you just sort of play it by ear. But we're going to dwindle that thirty-two million each month from here to November because, again, if you consider half your budget's coming from property taxes, and, and we're on a hundred and twenty million, just around that figure, ten million a month, five million of it is not coming in, and we're still spending ten million a month.
A, a good rule of thumb that I know a lot of people use, I, I try to keep three months of cash reserves for my business, you know? That way, if you, if you have a problem, I, I even have clients that, when I've done business consulting, if they get an audit by Medicare or something, if they're in the healthcare field, they cannot receive payments for three or four months. So, it's, it's uncommon to keep three to six months of reserves. We're not even keeping three months, it sounds like, at that leanest period.
At, at, in the lean period or not, because you use it all, but on an annualized basis, which is what everybody's being measured on, you're building and peaking, you know, because in November, of course, we got lots of cash because of the sixty-plus million, most of it coming in during that month in December.
I ask that because so much of, the reason, why do we care about the cash reserves so much? A lot of it also has to do with the, the credit ratings, our bond ratings, Standard and Poor's and the other rating agencies. I think they've been somewhat, and this is just my, my thoughts on it, they've been lenient towards all governments because they know how bad the two thousand eight and two thousand nine periods were, and then we still haven't hit our stride of recovery. But I am worried, I will tell you, that I think that the credit rating agencies, now that the economy is starting to grow, property values are coming back, if they're not seeing steps to shore up our finances, bond ratings could be impacted. And that not only impacts us, that also impacts the cities, the schools, everybody, because a lot of our, it's just like, it's no different than when you, as an individual, go get homeowner's insurance, car insurance, or, or go get a new loan. If your credit rating is poor, you pay a lot more for, for, for any type of financing that you go get. And so, that's why everybody might be going, well, wait a minute, if you have thirty million dollars comparison to everybody else, and, but, and you're going to spend six, if you get into it, I mean, you're getting into twenty percent, you're going to blow through twenty percent of your reserves when it's not raining outside anymore.
Until you're twenty-five, I can just talk just a second about that, to the, uh, three months. Three months is twenty-five percent. Three out of twelve months is twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of our present budget, thirty-two million, if you take that times four, is a hundred and twenty-eight, which is then twenty-five percent. So, the thirty-two million presently represents about twenty-five percent or the three months that you're talking about. When you dip to the twenty-six million, if you do dip into it and take that six million next year to use to, to fund the budget, you'll be at twenty-six million, and obviously, you're reducing that twenty-five percent, which reduces the three months down to something much less than that.
Let me show you this. Last year, when we approved the budget, our fund balance was thirty, thirty-four million last year, thirty-two plus. Okay? We, we took three million out, okay? When we approved the budget this year, we had, we were told, I was told, we had thirty-five million in, in the, the fund balance, okay? Now, the unique thing was, it's thirty-five million unrestricted fund balance, okay? What that means is you can take all of it. So, if the county had obligated twenty million of it, you could only tap into fifteen million because twenty million would be reserved. Now, having said that, uh, the calculation, uh, the numbers are all the same, it's just how we look at them. Uh, a, a good average month for us is like ten million, okay? When we started out with thirty-five million at the fund balance, and I'm sure that at the end of the, end of June, it ends up being thirty-two plus. So, that means if we take the thirty-five, and this was my calculation, we, we start out with twenty-nine million in fund balance. Okay? Now, that six million we drew out is not going to be paid out July the first. Half of that six million, or most of it, would be drawn out over six months, which covers that, that two percent raise, okay? The other part of it will not come out until January the first, when we give all the firemen, policemen, and EMS additional two percent. Okay? Now, if you assume, for assumption, and you know what assumption does, it, our lean months is August, September, and October, just like we all agreed to, okay? Now, if we're doing ten thousand, if we're doing ten million dollars a month, that's the ten million. Now, you're not going to dip in to the, to the full ten million a month, okay? Now, we go real lean, and this ain't just county, this is cities, and, and I dealt with this with the city for twenty-some odd years, but the deal is, you, you barely drank in water in the last three months, and then when the taxes start coming in in six weeks, they're probably going to collect ninety-seven percent of it. Then, all of a sudden, everybody can wear fur coats. But you have to program it. So, the, the point I'm making is how could we end up with fund balance last year of thirty-two plus, if you want to call it that? It was thirty-two or thirty-three last year. We, we took three million out of it, and this year, at the end of the year, during the same cycle, it's back up. So, so we, we've replaced that. So, the, the deal is, uh, I, I buy the theory, everybody's on the same page, everybody's doing numbers, but it depends on how you look at the numbers. So, that's, the way I won't be getting a whole lot of phone calls, except for one way. I'm obviously adamantly against a, any kind of raise for taxes. That's just me. So, that way, the people can call me and say, beg me to vote for it. But anyway, having said that, I just wanted to say that because this is where I'm at here full-time. Now, I'm not a financial guy. I'm not a financial guy. Uh, the Honorable Preston can run circles around me with numbers. He, he can, he can do more numbers than, than I can in a week. But, and that's why he's valuable, and he's an asset to this board up here. Mr. Bowman is good with numbers. So, it, it, it depends on, they depend upon staff. And this is how, it, it's really sad, but we get, I got thirty-five, he got something, you gave us thirty-two plus, and he said it was eighteen. So, what we have to do is, is, is get on the, we're all on the same page, but we might be in a different book. It's all, all, all the stuff focused to the same thing. Ten million dollars a month, everybody knows that's what it costs us. So, anyway, having said that, I yield it before anybody else has a comment.
Okay? If not, thank you, Fred.
Appreciate it.
The Honorable Councilman.
We're going to suck up there.
That's a hot.
Yes, sir.
Well, you're accustomed to this, right? Okay? Somebody else like to be heard?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, let's, let's make sure we go around one time before we start repeating. So, if anybody would like to get up and speak, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Jeff Pruitt. I'm at eight-one-eight Archie Drive, that's out in Lake Dal North. Gary Barham, you ran on election was to hold the mill, to reduce the millage rate. This is from your website, where you would fight, you said you'd fight last year, you reduced it, and you'd said you'd do it this year, but you're not going to do it this year. You're going to leave the military the, the same, which means, um, with the property taxes going up, everybody's going to have to pay more money. And that's, that's what you guys are saying basically is, um, the, because of the inch, because, uh, property values are going up, you don't have to raise the millage rate, which means everybody's going to pay more. It's kind of a backdoor raise of the millage rate? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm getting, Gary?
You're not getting that from me.
So, this is a rev, revenue neutral?
I'm supporting rolling the taxes back.
Pardon?
I'm supporting rolling the taxes back.
Okay. So, the other guys here are the ones that are going to leave the millage rate the same and not lower it because property taxes have, uh, I mean, the property values have gone up?
You have to ask them individually.
Tommy Smith?
I, I, I just told you, I'm voting no.
You're voting no?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you're going to lower the millage rate?
I'm, I'm going to go with the twelve point nine nine five.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to go back to the millage rate.
So, you're going to roll the millage rate, rate too?
I'm, I'm lis, I'm listening and looking. I, I'm not saying that I am and that I'm not. I'm not going to paint myself into a corner. Once again, did your, did your, did your property values go up?
Yes.
Were they, how long have you lived there?
Ten years.
Sir?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Yeah.
In the last ten years, did they go down significantly?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would agree that if this was a generic property tax, if the, if the value of the tax of the properties had gone up in a real market, but what, but, um, even David Curry over here can tell you, we have a lot of outsiders coming in and buying the properties and to converting them into real, into rental properties. I have a lot of people coming out of the northeast hedge funds that are buying the properties and converting them into rental properties. And that's why you're seeing a increase in your tax value. That's a large percentage of it. That's not considered what I would consider a normal business cycle for property taxes. In other words, what I'm trying to say is, uh, I heard Preston, Brian Preston, say that things were getting better. Well, if you take property taxes as a reason things are getting better, that's not correct. Because what we're having is, we're having outsiders coming in, purchasing the properties, and converting them into rental properties, which is in turn, they're competing and raising the prices of the values. But we're not having the genetic, the individuals coming in and buying them as single-family homes.
So, you're saying that property values are artificially inflated?
Yes. I'm saying you, well, I'm saying that they're, based on the market conditions, that they are what true. But what I'm trying to say is, the, um, the, the increase is not due to everybody in the county, their economic situation improving. I'm saying the, um, the reason they're going up is we have people coming in and buying the properties because they were low and converting them into rental properties, and their competition is driving up the property values.
Right. Do you want your property values to go? I'm not trying to be adversarial. I'm just trying to make, do you want your property values to go?
Well, everybody wants it to go up. The problem is, they also don't want the property values, the taxes to go up, and that can be adjusted through the millage rates. And that's what everyone's saying is, you can do it two ways. You can actually raise the millage rate, which will cause property taxes to go up, or you can sit back, not raise the millage rate, and if the values of the properties go up, then through the millage rate not being lowered, you have the same, you have the same value, you get, you get additional revenue, if you follow what I'm saying on that.
Yes, sir. I, I, I go back to the point of, and, and there again, just for information purposes, the, a mill five years ago or six years ago, whatever that case may be, would have been six million plus, and today it's four point two-three somewhere in that neighborhood. So, when I look at the difference in those, I think, well, we're trying to run the same government with the same amount of people. We've cut dramatically. I mean, the county's cut dramatically, but things are starting to come back. So, there's departments that were cut to the bone that are having to be kind of replenished now simply because of the house. There's, there is a lot of housing and other commercial construction currently going on in Henry County. A lot of that will hit the budget next year, some of it hit the budget this year, as, as revenue, basically, or tax. But when those things happen, what you're, you know, you're still trying to run the county on, um, about, you know, seventy-five percent of what you got six years ago with the same amount of people.
Well, I do understand. I do understand, but don't get, uh, I'm about, um, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but also, you, you guys bought an airport last year.
Not last year.
Oh, the year before. You bought an airport and you own a golf course. Come on, guys.
We paid two million dollars for it. Would you not have done that?
What, bought an airport? No. I wouldn't have bought a golf course either. Was, was the airport going to move? Was it going to go somewhere?
Let's leave it, the conversation to the budget.
Well, the reason I brought that up, sir, was I heard that, them saying, well, we had our, um, we had insurance go up, things go up. Well, if things are going up, you're not out buying things. You don't buy airports, you don't buy golf courses. You, you do like everyone else that has a home here, you cut back, maybe you don't take the vacation. So, that's why I brought that up. I didn't bring it up as, to discuss that. I'm just saying, you have cost, you brought up cost of, uh, your labor cost, your turnover and your police officers. I'm bringing up also the other cost of, you're building things, you're buying things. And what I, but my, my, my statement is that you should not raise the taxes, and, and you can look at it both ways, you should not raise your taxes by doing millage rates increases, or you can do the backdoor, letting the property values go up and keep your millage rate the same. That's wrong.
We don't have anything to do, my final comment with this gentleman, we don't have anything to do with property values going up.
No, 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 no. But by set, by not lowering, but not lowering the millage rate, you're doing, you're, you're accomplishing a tax increase because property values are going back up, and they're going to continue to climb some. And so, what you need to do is lower the millage rate to keep everything revenue neutral.
I want to recognize District Two for a comment.
Um, I, I just want to make sure I get the quote right, because you said that I attributed that property taxes were going up is a good thing, or, and I was talking about property values. Now, and, and here's my point, is I pulled up your property, right after you purchased the pri, the, the property, you're paying a, a little over four thousand dollars a year in property taxes. And you got up to the point that you were paying close to forty-five hundred dollars a year in taxes in two thousand nine, but then in two thousand thirteen, you're paying right over three thousand. So, I understand what you're saying is that we should just keep things standard, but it, what, how would you have felt if we'd have locked you in at forty-five hundred dollars or forty-four hundred dollars, even though your values went down? We didn't. We dropped, you, your, what you paid per year went down by over a thousand dollars.
Oh, and thank goodness for that. I'm happy.
And now, things are coming back, and you're, you're saying you don't want that increment coming back, even though we came back, even though we added more, more assistance?
Well, if you look at those years, those were the go-go years. People were making money, so they kind of didn't mind it. Now, what I'm trying to explain is, there's not, the go-go years are not going on right now.
Because Zillow is also estimating your property's going to go up, you know, 5% to 10% next year, too. I mean, that's just their forecast.
Yes.
And that's not all speculative, hedge fund managers buying it. There's actually people moving to the county.
Oh, of course, I agree with that. But what I'm saying is, if you don't leave, if you leave the millage rate where it is, and I was expecting the millage rate, I watched it, as it went down, the millage rate also went up, as you guys were trying to keep the revenues and keep everything flowing. What I'm saying is that you should not, with the values going up, you should lower the millage rate.
And I agree with that. I think that there, I think that, I just don't know that we can roll it all the way back, because we've had a six to seven-year period where we've had all of our maintenance and everything compressed, and then ISO ratings. I don't know if y'all have heard us talk about what happened with ISO ratings. The insurance, the way they calculate your fire insurance rates on your homeowner's insurance, they used to just figure out, I think they took a ruler, and it's how the bird flew, as long as you're within that certain mileage, you've got low insurance rates if your, if your fire station was close. The insurance groups have gotten smart. They said, okay, we have all this GPS technology, we're not going to go how the bird flies, we're actually going to take roads and see if you're within that five-mile radius to get the lower insurance discount. ISO ratings got crushed in Henry County, because now we, and so that's why I can tell you, and I know in my district, District Two, we're trying to build two fire stations right now, because we have homeowners that their property, I mean, their insurance values went up, their costs for insurance went up twofold. Because now that there's ISO ratings, I can tell you, District One, we've had communications about this, he's got the same thing going on in his district. So I, here's the hardest part for me, when I got elected and came on here, is that I consider myself a fiscal conservative person. I mean, I run my personal finances very conservative. I run, you know, I practice what I preach. And I wanted us to do the exact same thing here, but then you realize, you can't, you've got to protect the citizens, public safety, fire safety, these are things that, I mean, you cannot scrimp on those things. And with an increasing population, the only way we can add those services that protect our citizens, and that's our primary purpose, is by continuing to add fire stations and add those type of things, as technology's made it where we need more, so that our citizens are protected better. It's not, I don't want to, I don't want to tax you any more than anyone else. I hope you don't get that feeling.
What, but what I'm trying to say is, you bought an airport, you bought a golf course, okay? You have a water park. I mean, come on, guys.
Where do we have a water park?
Aren't you going to build one in North Henry? Anyone going in North Henry?
That's incorrect.
Is that incorrect?
Incorrect.
Okay.
And the airport, and here's the thing, is that not everybody up here, and I'll tell you also, as you said, the go-go years, perspective is different in hindsight. And I was not on the board on those things, but I also don't think that we can keep bringing that up forever, because at some point, the board that you have here, even if they didn't make the decision, they have to make lemonade out of those lemons. And that's what we're working on trying to do. I can tell you, I went and toured, and I want to stay on the property values, but I can tell you that just abandoning the airport wouldn't be successful either for District Two. I mean, that's in, it's in my district, and we want to make it where, I don't think it can ever be a great moneymaker, but I do think it can generate a lot of interest in businesses that will help lower your taxes by increasing the tax digest. That's the problem. We have too many resident, we rely too much on residential property instead of commercial and industrial property. But we've got to get those businesses in here to help stabilize our tax digest. And that's why we're trying to do some of this vision planning that will help with that.
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't mention the airport once, the golf course about three times. We just need to limit to the budget, the avalon tax, no matter how we got to where we are, we're here. So having said that, you about to wind it up, right?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, who else? The Honorable David Curry, Commissioner, would like to be recognized to enlighten us.
Just want to make a couple of things clear. We keep talking about if we do a full rollback. If you do a full rollback for this year, you're actually not going to collect the revenue that you did last year. Through the new TAVIT tax, settlement appeals and things like that, this county will collect $333,000 less than it did last year. So if you do a full rollback, don't expect to have the revenue come in from tax base that you had last year, it will be less. The second thing I want to kind of address the citizens, when they receive their assessment notices in the mail, we used, the Tax Assessment Office used this year's value, last year's millage rate. It has all the entities under there. So if they see an increase of $100 on their tax bill, the county is not receiving that $100. Part of that's school board, part of that's the water authority. The county receives roughly 32 cents of every dollar we collect in property taxes. So when they got that assessment notice in the mail, I just want to be fully aware, each entity gets a piece of that increase, the county only receives a little over a third. Okay?
Let me ask you this.
Sure.
You just stimulated me. You said that we're going to collect for that true rollback, 12.9995, is going to generate 330?
333,902 dollars less than you did.
I saw that in the paperwork. Now, let me ask you this.
You didn't send it to paper, we didn't advertise that one, that was in the email, I believe, we sent to you.
If, for an example, what would be the millage rate if we collected exactly? If we exactly, if we collected exactly the same thing last year, what would the millage rate be?
We can run those numbers, I don't have that in front of me.
Now, that wouldn't be, what I'm saying is, is if that 12.9995 is based on us losing 300 and some odd thousand, then why don't we add that 330-some-thousand in there and let the millage rate be 13.001? And now, if we do that, would that be considered an increase?
Sure.
Why? I must ask, and how could, what did you say?
Because you raised the millage rate from what it was last year. If you're, if you're raising the millage rate?
I understand that.
Okay.
Okay, what I'm saying is, we took the millage, we took the monies we took in last year, the tax, say it's $65 million, just hypothetically, okay? Now, because of this 330-some-odd thousand dollars you said has to be deducted from it, okay? What if we make, what would be the millage if we said, okay, we collected $65 million last year? What would be the millage rate if we collect exactly $65 million now? How does that 330,000 come off the top and penalize us and make it an increase without collecting the same amount of money?
Okay, you've increased the millage rate, do you have a report?
I do. Could I just speak to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am. Are you on the floor?
Thank you. The millage rollback rate is calculated based only on the real property values. Even though what makes up the total digest includes motor vehicle, heavy-duty, timber, and mobile home values, what the calculation that the state of Georgia, this is a Department of Revenues calculation, this is not done by the Tax Commissioner or county governments, this is a state mandate. What regulates whether you roll, have to roll your millage rate back or not, is the reassessment that's done to current existing property over and above what it was this year. So that does not take into consideration the motor vehicle. So the motor vehicle, if you'll, I think we emailed all the chairmans, and you can look at that on the five-year history, the motor vehicle values have decreased in what we're taxing on. So that's part of the reason that you will see less revenue if you roll it all the way back. But the formula requires that you roll the, roll the millage rate back based solely on your last year's values, the current reassessed value, and that's not new building, that's not growth, that's just reassessing, reassessing existing property. So if you take last year's values and that reassessed, then you have to divide that by the current, by last year's millage rate. That's why you have a rollback of 1.50, I think, unincorporated. Each district is different, again, as we said, because of the different exemptions and whatever. But the rollback of 12.995 is required, because that's the, that takes into consideration the reassessment over last year. But in the end result of that, with all the other values included, that's why you'll see a negative amount of revenue over last year of 333,000. We can do calculations to generate the exact dollar amount we got last year, but that would, that would still be considered an increase, because anything over 12.995.
That was my question.
Yes, sir.
So the deal is, absolutely, whether we like it or not, because of the law, and I know they've done some funky things with, with the tags, and if you pay all you have to lower them upfront, you don't have to pay it for something. But bottom line is, without an increase, the avalon millage for next year would have to be 12.995. That answers my question, thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the honorable people?
The only other question I have is, I mean, you brought up-
A good point, that I think is just the public ought to understand, is that, remember the state changed the way motor vehicle taxes are collected, is that now instead of doing an annual tag fee, it's a one-time, six and a half percent, is it seven?
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's staggered, last year was six and a half, this year is 6.75, next year it goes 7%. It's not a tag fee, that individual will continue to pay a $20 tag fee, it's taking away the avalon taxes. The state of Georgia's trying to get away from the birthday tax.
Yeah.
As I meet people in functions, I refer to it as I send them a birthday card. They don't like getting a birthday card from me, but the state of Georgia getting away from the avalon taxes. So instead of paying sales tax when you purchase something new, and avalon taxes every year, you simply pay that this year 6.75, next year 7%, but you pay it casual sales or-
Private party sales.
Right. And you pay it the one time. So you continue to get a birthday card from me, but it only has a $20 tag fee associated with it.
But my question, to go through all that, is that the new change, instead of getting the annual birthday card, as you mentioned it, which was the avalon tax, now you just pay the one time, when you purchase, whether it's new, used, private party, you're going to pay, that's going to be 7% tax. Are we projecting that we're going to get less and less? I mean, I know they were making us whole for a period of time, but wasn't there?
And they're going to continue to make us whole based on the 2012 base year.
The old year, but as we know, as the economies grow, as the county grows, as we get more car dealerships, in the past, we would have had quite a good pickup revenue increase here. We don't get that anymore.
You're going to see a revenue increase at a different line item. You're going to see this digest continue to decrease, the values in the motor vehicle line, the avalon tax line, decrease.
Yeah.
So you can't say I'm going to keep the same millage rate year in, year out, expect the same revenue, because you're going to see a decrease year in, year out in motor vehicles.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you so much. Does anybody else like to be heard? Yay or nay for the, yes, sir? There's a guy come up last night at our meeting, and he said my name and address.
I'm Dick Arbiere, and I live at 602 Arlington Circle. The postal address is Jonesboro. I live in, I believe, Commissioner Preston's district. I have to direct this to you, Mr. Chairman. When you opened up the meeting, let's say, the cadence of your speech pattern was such that I didn't understand a word of what you said, because it just went way over my head. Not the technical aspects of it, it's just you talked too fast. Therefore, I was relieved when Commissioner Preston picked up the ball, and I'm impressed with your credentials, sir. And was able to explain what I think a lot of us just didn't understand. On the other hand, Mr. Chairman, you dismissed, I think is the polite word, the good ladies who addressed this group, and the concerns that she had, and the fellow that, two back from me, talking about the airport, excuse me. Am I given, do I understand that this is, this meeting is to discuss millage and all the elegant financial aspects of it, a percent here and rollback and so on, and nothing to do with the amount of money that triggers all of this, the budget, in other words? This is directed to you, Mr. Chairman.
The thing that triggers is the money. In this year, our budget is 127 million. Out of that, we will collect about 60, somewhere around 65 million from property tax. The rest of it comes from grant money we get, fines, forfeiture, fees, building fees, inspections, that's where the remainder comes. So 60, 65,000, well, just about half of the budget is dependent upon some form of avalon tax.
Right.
Yes, sir. And I'm going to share this, I'm going to apologize for my speech.
No, I mean, I speak the way I speak, I have a strange accent, you know?
I was air traffic controller for 33 years, so you've got to bear with me. But anyway, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I yield a fallback to you.
Again, I didn't understand your last comment.
Yes, sir.
But let's go back to the good lady sitting behind me. She had concerns about the money that's being spent, the budget. And somewhere in the, in the last 10 minutes, when this fellow brought up a budget matter, you dismissed it by saying, listen, we're here, and I'm paraphrasing, we're here to discuss millage. So the question is, how did we get to this point where, you know, everything's very tidy, or life isn't tidy? I don't come to these meetings that often, over the 26 years I've lived in Henry County. But the few times I've been here, I hear things like, well, the population has increased, so we need more police, we need more police cars, they have to change fire engines because they've outlived their useful mileage. I'm sorry, I don't follow this, this line of thinking, that for every 100,000 people, I need 2.3 police officers and 1.7 police cars, in a manner of speaking. So let's come back. Are you prepared to talk about the budget, how you got to this point where now you're trying to find a way to pay for it all?
The budget has been approved. On May the 22nd of this year, this governing body approved a balanced budget as required by law.
Who approved it?
This governing body up here approved a balanced budget.
And what was the input from the congregation, the citizens?
Yes, sir. We had two public hearings, I think it was, before we approved the new budget.
And the vote was 6-0, meaning all commissioners voted for the budget.
Say again, please.
All commissioners voted for the budget. It was a 6-0, meaning six commissioners voted for the 127 million budget, zero voted against it. Is that what your question, because I think that's what, that's kind of what I'm getting, is that you're, you're asking, how are we, because nobody's talking about the budget, we're only talking about the millage, and it's, it's two. And I kind of understand where you're coming from, because when I voted, I have voted against the millage increase in the past, but I also voted against the budget, because I felt like the two were married to each other.
Absolutely.
You can't, you can't vote for budget and then vote against funding the budget, because you either have to vote against the budget and then vote against the millage, then you're clean. But you can't vote for it and then not vote to pay for it. I think, is that the point you're trying to make? Yeah. I agree with you.
Thank you. I think she's still waiting to speak, though.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
My name's Alfred Lee, I live at 253 Lewis Drive in Stockbridge, Georgia.
What's your name?
Alfred. You might remember me by Buddy, but-
I'm just going to ask you this, this is humorous. Do I talk too fast for you? Do I talk too fast for you?
No.
Okay. Buddy was an air traffic controller as well, I worked with him for 30 years, but go ahead.
We're talking about the millage rate going up, but if the property values, and my property value went up 27.5%, which I thought was excessive, my home is 40, 41 years old, so I thought it was a little excessive, but that being said, if your millage rate goes up, I mean, if your property values go up, your tax revenue's going to go up. If their automobile tag rate goes down, whatever, if you, if there's more cars in the, more cars in the county and more people buying cars, you're still going to get more revenue because you're selling, you're selling more and getting more taxes off the, off the cars you're selling, and they sell, as they turn over, you get taxes off of that, and there's more of them being sold in the county. So I mean, to me, you're automatically getting an increase in, increase in revenue by your property values going up. So raising the millage rate is just basically adding on to what you're getting from, from your assessment of your property values. And in my case, I think 20, it's 27, about 27.5% is more than enough increase to, to pay my part of what y'all need. But that's the way I look at it, anyway. I just wanted to let you know, I speak my piece.
Thank you so much.
Because I want to make sure, because this is kind of what Councilmember Byrd was talking about earlier, because you just said, I want to make sure I clarify the record. Last year's the millage rate was 14.497. Even if we keep the millage exactly where it was last year, and that's what you were saying, is 27.5% ought to be enough, nobody up here wants to go above that 14.497. Nobody here is proposing to raise your millage. It's a semantics thing that they're saying, because your value has gone up and we collect more taxes, it doesn't matter even unless we go all the way back into the 12s with our millage, we, it's, they call it, it's a tax increase. So I want you to know, nobody's trying to take it above 14.497. I can assure you of that.
Well, like I said, you know, even with my property tax going up, I'm going to have to pay more taxes.
Right.
And, and as Tommy probably knows- And, and as, as Tommy probably knows, my, my salary hasn't gone up in several years, because it's been frozen. See, any, I haven't, y'all gave, y'all employees 2%. We, I haven't gotten any increase in mine in several years now, because mine's been frozen.
Thank you so much, Buddy. Anybody else like to be heard? If not, I would like for the young lady to reappear. That, since nobody else wanted, passed up the first opportunity. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions and a couple, maybe more comments after thinking through it. I also was an air traffic controller, and your speech is fine. I think it's just other things.
Thank you so much.
It, what we, what you, what you, we gotta realize, though, is you are raising more money. You said your rate, the expenses, this year's budget that you approved in, in May was how much, 127 million? You can't go back and undo that. You've made your decision about that. About 50% of it comes from, from what? Property taxes, you said about? And it's only property taxes, or is that also what's left of avalorum and car, car sales?
Our budget about...
Make, make sure you speak up loud. It's all of it. Okay, so all tax money, it's about 50%, right? About 50%, we can say, right? That's close enough to 50%. All right. Did we, did we meet, what was the budget last year? The 2013, 2014 budget? Anybody have that?
Last year, the budget was 121 million.
121 million?
Yes, ma'am.
So, how much money we raised? Basically, $6 million less, which is the increases, right, in the pay, right?
Let me, okay, I'll explain this one. Last year's budget was 121 million. Reason being, we took 3 million out of what we call fund balance.
I understand.
Unrestricted fund balance. And last year, it was like 34 million.
Okay.
Okay. Now, this year, the budget is 127 million.
Right.
Okay, the, the only significant difference is, is we using the same amount of money this year as last year, and last year as 12, because we know the money is, the economy
Okay.
is, is real tight still, as you well know. Okay. Last year, the employees had not had a raise in like five or six years.
I feel so bad for them.
So, so we gave them a 1.8% raise. That cost like 1.5 or 6 million, okay? Then, we got in a dilemma with a major medical insurance, which went up 16% last year.
I feel bad for them about that, too.
And in time, we, we tried to negotiate some significant savings for the employees, and by the time we got to that, it was too late to try to pass on some to the employee. So the full 16% was like 1.9 million. The board ate that.
Okay.
Last year.
So you gotta, you've gotta pay that money back to yourselves. I understand that.
No, no, we, we paid that over a period of 12 months. The 100% of the 16% was passed on to the employees from major medical. Okay, we put them on notice last year that we're not gonna be able to do that next year, which is now we're into this year's budget. Okay, so what we did, we had another 16% increase. As, as if insurance is, gas and food is all that sort of thing going up, everything. Insurance went up 16. In order to get the 16%, they both started out at 25%. So what, what the board did was negotiate some concessions, like a little more copay and a little more deduction, something of that nature, to get it down from 25% to 16%. Now, this year, we passed on 75% of that one, of that 16% to the employee. Okay, we're only picking up 25%. Okay, now, we put in a 2% raise for everybody. We have about, just somewhere around 1,500 employees. We put in a 2%. Okay, now, for the public safety people, as you heard us indicate here, public safety is significant. If we don't protect them, nothing else matters. So we giving them an additional 2%. Would this board like to give them 10%? We'd like to give all our employees, we'd like to back them up, compress it, and, and give them something equivalent to 2% for the last five, six, seven years. It's not gonna happen. Okay, so what we did, in order to make that balanced budget, we took the same amount of money last year in this budget as we, this year as we collected last year. Okay, and it's about 65 million. Okay, in order to balance the budget, which is required by law, we dipped in to fund balance.
Right.
Okay, now, fund balance is, it's been verified was 35 million on May the 22nd. Okay, now, I explained this while ago, the 35 million is, is unrestricted.
Right.
Okay, what that means is, obviously, it wouldn't be too smart to take it all, but you can tap in. So that 6 million that we took out of fund balance, the previous, the 2 million we took out of fund balance the previous year, which we had about 33 million in fund balance, this year, after we took the 3 million out, 12 months of last year, we ended up with 35 million in fund balance. That tells you, not only did we put back the, the 3 million, but we added up another million to put it back into fund balance. Okay, you have to look at that.
Right.
Now, the budget now is approved with no tax increase with the rollback. For an example, this budget has been approved, assuming that the tax millage for this coming year will be 12.995. So if the board approves any increase, then they'll have to go back and amend the budget and find out where they're gonna put this extra money. Okay, and I know it's been a long time since we said this, but the, the, the difference between 11, 11 point, 12.995 and 14.497 is 11.5, 6%. And money, that generates another 7.1 million.
Right.
So that, no matter whether they approve it, if they approve the millage rate as it is now, it would be a tax increase. We'll have to go back and amend the budget and find a place to put that 7.2. That 7.2 has, has not been allocated to any particular item.
And that's not my question. And that's not my question.
Well, let me erase all that. I thought that was...
I understood that, and you did a really good job presenting, presenting that. Um, my question is, this year's budget is 127, basically the same from last year, because you had to dip into the fund, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Basically, because of balanced budget, is, is everybody...
It's the same.
Is it the same? Whoever's in charge of that? Y'all, all of you in agreement that it's the same? The money that was raised last year, was it enough to cover the budget last year?
Yes.
Then, then I can expect what?
It was short of 3 million, I believe.
3 million? Huh, okay.
Yeah, because we, we had to get into cash reserves by $3 million last year. We've had to get into cash reserves for the last five or six years, I believe.
Okay, so for, and how much about...
We've been getting into that rainy day fund since the financial collapse occurred.
Okay, so...
And, and, and just to get baseline, and Chairman or maybe the Finance Director knows, what's the peak budget that the county had before we started doing all the cutbacks?
That'd be great.
132, 132 million.
132 million is, and then the budget, I can tell you, the first year I was on here, we dropped it down to one, it was, it was 116, but it was even...
Okay.
It was 112 the year before that, I think. I mean, Reed, Reed can correct me if I'm wrong.
Those are fair numbers. Okay, how many people do we collect taxes from?
A minute, what?
People are we collecting taxes from? House, uh, house property taxes? I mean, this is a very simple thing. It's multiplication and division. I don't have my calculator with me. Does anyone have one?
You can borrow one.
No, I've got one back here. You can, 132 million divided by 83,000. I mean, we should expect, basically, hey, I used to pay $2,800 in property taxes, too. I sucked it up. I paid it for several years. I never appealed my taxes. Because I said, well, the county keeps on, I keep on calling the tax assessor's office, and they say, my house is valued under market. My house would have never have sold for the 220 they said it was worth. So I sucked it up. Okay, we got, I got three years of good, I left it back there, three years of, of paying 11 to 1,300 dollars. Now I see it creep, creeping back up. I'm thinking, okay, I was thinking, couple of years, it's going down. It's gonna, it's gonna level itself out. Now I'm back up to 20, 2,000. What was, what ends up being the average number on the parcels, per parcel?
Sorry, my, this calculator, I'm, here, I can, I can take off some zeros.
You didn't try to use one. It was on the podium, did you?
It should be 130, 132,000 divided by 83.
I don't ever use that one in the program here. I threw mine away.
That's 1,590.
1,000?
That one works.
590.
590. So if, if we all paid average in the county, that much, we'd have it all taken care of. Why must we keep on basing it on tax?
Well, the, and, and I think I love, because that's...
That's, that's, that's a nice number. I'd be willing to pay 1,500 every year.
I, I would, believe me, Commissioner Bowman over there would love to pay 15,900. The prob, you know, we have homesteading. This is, this is the compression issue we had with the tax digest, is that you know, the, what's, what's the homeowner's exemption? What's the, what's the...
15,000.
There was a, what's the threshold, once your value went below, was it 30,000, 40? Where, where did the taxes, county-wise, not school-wise, but what, 40,000, was it? 45,000. We had a number of homes, and I'll tell you, especially in the Hampton area, I've gotten emails because the...
I've seen them. I live there.
Where the values went below the 45,000, meaning the assessed values went below it. So their tax values, county-wise, went to zero. As you could, they, they were not gonna pay 1,590 bucks when their tax bill is zero, and that's what, but they're now feeling the pinch, because now as their values have come back to, say, 60, 70, 80,000 dollars, those are, when you go from zero to even if it's 500 dollars, your taxes have gone up, you know, by a percentage. We're talking about five, six, I mean, you're talking about a large percentage there from zero. Now, if you compare it to 2005, 2006, you're still less than where you were in that, but I would love, and this is where, when I get into policy discussions on politics, but we all know that we try to put safety nets out there for the general public, that we, we can't ask everybody to pay 1,500 dollars. It just doesn't, because people who pay more than that would... I pay three times that much, and I know Reed probably pays 26 times that much, if not even more than that. And, and I understand that that's just the way the economy is structured, because we want to make sure that there is some type of, for, for people.
So I can, I can ask each one of you up there? You're not two party members?
I mean, I'm a conservative. I consider myself, I don't try to put myself in a box.
At least by the principles that you've been taxed enough. Because, because I've paid, yes, I've paid on the other end. On this house, I've paid on the other end. I've paid 2,800 several years. I've got the property tax. You don't have to bring it up on the computer. 2,800. On a, on an income that didn't receive, has not received a pay increase since 9, I'm sorry, since 2002. Yeah, I'm a bit sarcastic. I'm really very sarcastic. 2% increase, hey, that's a bunch of nothing. In my house, there is zero, zero pay increases. If you want something, you gotta go out and work for it and go get another job. My kids are home educated. I buy used books. You know, the, my property taxes, they have a nice line on them. It's the school M and O, maintenance and operation. Do you know my kids can't even play on the, on the, on the park equipment at those schools? They're restricted from it because they're home educated. You're cutting down the library, the library, you guys didn't cut down the library funding. I came here a month ago to, to beg for you guys to release some funds to them, because that is where we get books from. Am I, because am I allowed to go into the public schools and use their books? I am not, by my own choice. We scrimp, we save, so that we can get what we need to get done in our home. I'm asking the county to do the same thing. If it was enough money that you collected last year, you raised the property values, then the millage rate, I'm assuming that millage rate really doesn't mean per thousand? It means per million that you have rolling around in the county? Is that correct? Or does it mean per thousand that I have?
I'm gonna say it's per thousand, the millage.
At that rate, my property, my property taxes are going to go up 500 to 600 dollars, where you said already that how much you raised last year was enough for the budget.
Just a point of clarification, because it is, as the Tax Commissioner mentioned, we get 32% and a lot of your, and a lot of your concerns, and I understand it, because, you know, we don't get the lion's share of the tax bill. And, and I'll tell you, I don't think the, the Board of, the Board of Education, I don't think they're wasting your money either. I mean, I think they're very tight. And I, I don't, you know, that's something about the playground access, that's something that you ought to talk to...
I don't want their playgrounds. That's okay. I've got a nice yard.
But I will tell you, but the issue you bring up is one, that this is the part that, that I talked to the other commissioners about as well, is that the library issue breaks my heart. It really does. I mean, because exactly like you said, you don't use the school system stuff, so the library is an asset to you to go for the homeschooling resources. We, this is the dilemma we're struggling with as commissioners. We're going to find a solution for the library board.
Yeah, and, and...
And we're, we're gonna work towards that. But that's gonna require, just being straight up with you, more resources. Because the state has cut funding to the library. It's not us. We did, we cut it in 2012. I mean, we've had the same budget to the library, but we're going to have to find a solution for them, because the state's pushing more to us, and I'm not gonna pass the buck, and, and just, we're gonna find a solution.
Right.
And it's the same thing with the fire stations. District 2, go look at a map at where the fire stations are in Henry County. And I'm not picking on the other commissioners, because this is something that's happened over decades. We're gonna get some fire stations in District 2, because why do insurance companies raise the rates if you live outside that five-mile radius? Because there's a hazard there. The actuaries have figured out that it is dangerous, that you're less likely to get the response time. We're gonna fix that. And unfortunately, that costs money. And that's the part, that's where I'm getting pulled in both directions. I want to be as tight and as lean with this money as possible. But we got basic things that, you, you know, fire stations are a basic. To you, the library is a basic. You've gotta fix it.
And I'm not disagreeing with that. And I'm not, I didn't really mean to bring too much about the library into this. But my question is, if, say we needed the 132 million. Okay, that's not that much more on my property taxes than last year's was. Okay, so why does it appear in my mind that my taxes are going to be raised 500 to 600 dollars more?
Because the other, the water authority, the school system are the lion's share of it.
But, but it's in the 100, it's, it's all within that one, you told me it was 127. And basically, it was the same from one year to the other.
I mean, I can pull up, if you give me your address again, I'll pull up and give you, we can go through actual, your taxes.
Do you understand what I'm asking? It's 100, you said your budget is 127, correct?
This year.
I have a, you meant about that, right?
This year.
It's 127. And, okay, and, and the year before, it was basically 127, give or take a little bit of money.
The year before that was 122.
122, okay. I'm gonna say that's nearly the same. It's gonna be maybe 50 dollars difference in my bill. Okay, if we spread that wealth around, okay? If we, if we calculate that out, it shouldn't be this giant difference of 500 to 600 dollars, because the bill, the...
But that's not how we calculate it. We calculate it off of fair market net, and there's a reason the constitute, when they structured the state the way they did, the tax assessor is completely independent of us. And they did that on purpose, because they didn't want us to be able to go to the tax assessor and go, man, we are broke. Can you go out there and just jack everybody's prices up on their values? Just put it on there, and we'll be in a better position? No, we don't, we don't get to do, that's why we didn't, believe me, in those years when the values were plummeting 40%, there's a reason when they structured our constitution, and state constitution, they structured it that way to keep those parties separated, so we couldn't influence each other. Believe me, I've had other issues with businesses and others that I'm nervous for their viability in the long term, that me and the tax assessor don't see eye to eye on some things. Because I want to be an advocate for our businesses as well as our individuals. They keep us independent on purpose, so that we can't influence them, and it protects you guys on the taxpayer side. And so we don't get to, the tax digest is driven by those tax assessors.
Then it must be that I'm not understanding something. If, if my property taxes last year, hold on a second. Last year, I paid 1,117 dollars.
What was your address on Hillview?
275 Hillview Road. I can give you a copy of them. You're welcome to hold on to these seconds. 1,117 dollars and 52 cents. If my portion of that money was enough to fulfill the budget that you guys said you have, then why is my property taxes going to go up? Viable question, right? Or your property taxes, whatever it was last year, correct? Or yours, or yours, or yours, or yours. I'm, I'm not just looking after myself. This should be something we should all be concerned about. If the, the money were basically spent last year was about the same as it was the year before, then why shouldn't the amount... then why shouldn't the amount that we pay this year not be about the same as it was last year?
Let me, if I could, could I suggest this? This year's budget was designed based on the anticipated revenue from taxes as last year.
Okay.
Okay, last year, fourteen point four nine seven generated that amount. Overall number at sixty-five million. Okay, this coming year, because the assessment went up, that, uh, sixty-five million would be created by twelve point nine nine five.
Mm-hmm.
Now, keep in mind, the budget was approved on May the twentieth. It was a balanced budget.
I understand.
So any increase of that, this board will have to go back and amend the new budget and add, and decide how they're gonna use that additional money. It hasn't been decided.
That's not, that's not an issue. Do, do you understand what I'm asking?
No, I, I thought you said what we're gonna do with the, with the extra money.
No, I don't care what you're gonna do with that. What, what I'm saying is, the budget, the, look, here's, here is last year's budget, right? This year's budget that you just approved, it's about the same, right? Are they not about the same?
I'm, I'm following your sum of this term. I'm not, I'm not following.
It's, it's an increase of four to five percent, somewhere in that range.
How much?
I mean, I, I, let me, let me do the math real quick. So one twenty-two...
One twenty-two divided by one twenty-seven.
So five divided by one twenty-two.
By one twenty.
A four point one percent increase.
Not much, not much, okay? But they're almost, almost the same, okay? I'll, in my mind, even if it was five percent, we could say, then I could expect my bill to go up by five percent, right? I'm not looking at a five percent increase in my, in my tax bill. I'm looking at a, at a fifty percent increase.
I think the tax commissioner has some input.
And I'm not just talking about my bill. I'm talking about everyone here that lives in, in Henry County.
Okay, we, we need to go back and look though. And I'll be happy to take you downstairs and run you an estimate for this year compared to last year. Last year, you said your tax bill was how much?
One, eleven hundred dollars, let's say.
Eleven hundred. This year, estimated is two thousand twenty-one? Okay, of that thousand dollars, the bulk of that is, and I'm not trying to throw the school board under the bus, but the bulk of that increase is, is the school. The county here is only gonna receive roughly thirty-two, thirty-three percent of that increase.
I'm sorry, it's not, it's not you.
I'm not trying to, we're not trying to pass the buck. I'm certainly not trying to pass, as tax commissioner, I don't set millage rate, I don't set values, I simply bill and collect. However. It can be confusing, and I want you to understand the process.
No, it's a joke.
Thirty, thirty-two percent of that increase is for this commission here.
You guys are doing a great job.
Let me, let me explain this to you about tax commission.
No, I understand. I understand. It's not...
The tax commissioner has the easiest job of all, period. The, I'm serious. I'm serious. The tax assessor. Does the assessment. They give it to the tax commissioner. The board, the Henry County Board of Commissioners, the water authority, uh, the hospital did get one bill, but, uh, the, the school board, they send him the millage rate. He just merely calculates and sends you a bill. So the...
No, you guys haven't done anything.
He has the easiest job.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, David.
I just wanted to mention one more thing. I always try to do this when we get in front of a microphone, get in front of a group. Henry County, we're talking about homestead exemptions earlier. Henry County has some of the greatest homestead exemptions for its senior citizens. At age sixty-two, our seniors, when they're on fixed income, they get a break on their property taxes. That increases at age sixty-five, sixty-eight, and seventy. Since we've mentioned the school board getting a bulk, a bulk of those taxes, they don't pay any taxes, or they start getting a reduction at age sixty-two on the school tax, which is a drastic decrease in their property taxes. So the young man that worked at the, um, FA, I'd like to talk to you and find out, make sure you're getting your senior exemption. If you're old enough to get a senior exemption on your property taxes, because you'll see a drastic... Uh, I wanna see you before you leave, because I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. If any one of any of our citizens are watching this on camera, on the TV or internet, if you're age sixty-two years or older, you need to come see us and let you fill out the senior exemption for schools. You will see a drastic decrease in your school property tax. Thank you.
Get that, sixty-two. You'll be there next year. No, I can't. Hey, I've had it, I've had it six years. Would you like to be recognized again, sir?
I'm, I'm hoping that this is not long. I learned a lot at this meeting today, and, uh, I think a lot of us, and, uh, is, uh, you've been very patient, and everybody has learned a lot. But I, I think what I learned today is that, uh, how we do accounting and how we, the terms that are used, rollback and all of that is very confusing. And that, uh, none of the board members up here are, 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 are proposing that you raise the rate, uh, or go below, above the fourteen, or whatever it is right now. Nobody's proposing that. Yet, with the formula, it's called a tax increase. Now, uh, with, with, uh, it's fourteen four nine seven, I believe, right now, and nobody is proposing going above that. If the rate was lowered one percent exactly, below that fourteen, it would be what, thirteen four nine seven at that point?
It would.
Still considered a tax increase. Did everybody understand that? This is how the government does numbers, right? Now, if, if, let's per se, let's dictate that a little bit further. If we implemented that thirteen four nine seven, that number would end, would decrease the tax assessment that I received earlier, right? That would be lower. So it would actually go down based on the asse- the assessment that you sent was at fourteen four nine seven. If they lowered it one full percent, that assessment that I received will actually go down. Is that correct?
You're talking two different things.
Yes.
Assessments and then tax rates.
Just, because she doesn't have a microphone. The assessment would stay the same, because remember, that's independent.
Right, right, but...
Market value is completely independent of us. All that would be impacted is we lower the millage, which is the multiplier that you use to calc- to determine your taxes.
Right, I'm just saying, when I got the final bill, if you set that millage at thirteen point four nine seven, right? Or, or one full percent lower than what it is, uh, uh, what it was last year, the, the fi- my final tax bill will be lower than what this, it will not.
It, it, it would, if the, it depends, it really, it's all independent. It's all on how much your personal residence went up. If your personal residence only went up three percent, and we drop the millage as a percentage of the total millage, more than that three percent, your taxes would go down. But if your values went up ten percent, and we only dropped the value nine percent, then it, even if we did that countywide, dropped it nine percent, you would still have an individual tax increase. But that's not the way the accounting's done from, we have to look at the millage as an entire body, and then, and they give us a rollback number, which means it says, "How do you collect?" The same as last year, but as we even heard with the chairman, if you wanna comp- muddy the water even more, we roll it back to where they say we will actually collect less money than we did last year. It is the, the only, and I'll, and I'll go and confess this to you guys. I did really good in college on accounting classes. The only accounting class I had to go get tutoring on was governmental accounting. I, I know that is embarrassing to say, but I physically had to go get tutoring my senior year of college on governmental accounting, 'cause it defies all logic to me in some aspects. Because I think a lot of citizens watching this at home, they're thinking, it's the same thing when I had the council member come up to me, and he says, "Brian, why are y'all raising the millage?" And I'm like, "We're not raising the millage." It is considered, by the vocabulary of what the government gives us, a tax increase if we don't roll the millage all the way back to where we even are taking a pecking, their formula.
According to their formula. Now, in a re- regular, everyday household, okay, I'm not gonna use that formula, right? I mean, we, common language, layman's terms, if we, if the millage rate go, is, is, is less than it was last year, excluding that formula, it actually went down in the real world, but here, in governmental accounting, that's not what the, that's not the term, which is actually confusing everybody. I've, I've learned a lot today, because, uh, that's, uh, that, that kinda really, really puts it in perspective. And, uh, you know, I, I'm glad I came to this meeting today. I really am, because, uh, you know, uh, I've, I've got a lot of questions on our page about it going up, and, uh, you know, were we gonna be paying more taxes, or what the case is, was going to be? So I really appreciate that, and I, I just, I just wanted to get that question, uh, answered. This is a hard job. I know it is. And, uh, you know, understanding, I just wanna reinforce one thing. Just like, uh, uh, the speaker before me had said, uh, you know, we, we, we get what we pay for. And I, and I really appreciate Commissioner Preston saying that we're gonna find a solution to the library problem, because that needs to happen. And we get what we pay for. We really do. All of us wanna pay a little bit less, and I know that this board is gonna have us in some way, some sh- way, shape, or form, paying less. The question is, we're, uh, less than, uh, what that millage rate was last year, but the question is, how much we roll back. We gotta be very careful, because as Commissioner Preston said, uh, and we have been on it, that we don't wanna sacrifice services, and we don't wanna sacrifice, uh, our fire and, uh, all of those areas, because we wanna make sure that we continue to raise the bar. That requires investment in the future. And, uh, you know, unlike the gen- the housing values are going up. It's a hot housing market. People are moving here every day. There's a, there is projected that a hundred thousand additional citizens will move here in the next, uh, decade. We gotta prepare for that, and we, and we have to, our budget can't be so tight that we have no room for investment. We have to invest in our future. We really do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? If not, I'm gonna declare that the public hearing of this is over, and if somebody would move, we adjourn. Have a motion District Four? Second from District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. All opposed, no, same sign. Thank you. Thank y'all for attending.